Fun evening tonight. Right before I gavel the meeting, just to say thank you for all the people in the audience that are here tonight and we'll get you up on camera in just a few moments. So with that, the Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
And Pledge of Legions is applied by the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I read the podium invitation, it's probably a little bit like Where's Waldo or something, but there are a couple changes up here, which I don't know if everyone recognizes. But for one, we have the new Minnesota flag. I believe that's the first meeting that we've had, the new Minnesota flag showing behind us. And I've had the big debate with myself and others. I got a doctorate degree back in 2008 in leadership. It's an EDD. And for the longest time, because I had been on the council quite a while, as, you know, Ron Case, the decision was quite slow in coming to acknowledge my doctorate. So tonight, you all are the first ones to activate. Thank you so much. It's only 16 years later, but thank you for being part of that. All right, with that, it's customary at this time to read an open podium invitation to our residents. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government prior to each city council meeting, which typically occur the first and third Tuesday of each month, but during summer months, we pick one in the middle and have one a month. These open podiums occur from 6:30 to 6:55 PM here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please do contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and subject matter. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. So Mr. Getchow, we do have a couple, actually three, I guess, items under our proclamations and presentations. I'll turn it back over to you.
We do, Mayor. Thank you very much. We have our first presentation. We have returning to us again from Minnetonka School District, Molly Bonneman. She has come here, I believe, last at least three or four years to tell us all about the Tortatacca, of which our city is a participant in. It is an event that's coming up, I believe, within the next 30 to 60 days. So she will be giving us a presentation on that event.
Hi, Molly.
We had an assistant tonight. This is my son, Beau Bonneman.
All right.
And he will give you the swag that you so look forward to every year.
I think he might have to throw it at us.
I think he can make it up on there.
He can, you know.
Nope, no throwing. Just put the bag in there, stuff it up, yeah. Don't give him ideas, Mayor Case.
He could do that. Otherwise, have him come up around.
You want to go over here, buddy? You can go around.
He's doing well.
He was very curious what the city council does.
What was his name again?
His name is Beau.
Beau.
Beau Bonneman.
How old is Beau? How old are you?
Nine.
Nine. So Beau, are you next? You're going into fourth grade?
He's modeling your gift. He says it's the most comfortable hat he's ever worn, so. Are you running the meeting, Beau Bonneman? Oh, my goodness. Don't let it go to your head, kid.
Did you take a picture? How somebody take a picture?
We'll have to take a picture of you as mayor sometime, okay?
Okay, somebody taking a picture?
Thank you, honey.
All right, Molly.
He's a hard act to follow. So that way, most of the time. Presentation, we're good? Yep. Okay. What am I pushing here? Well, there we go. Hi, Tortatacca 2024, our logo this year. This is probably my favorite one to date. I really like this one. I think Louise, we are a marketing specialist, did a great job. So some Tortatacca information, it's always the first Saturday in August. This is the 19th annual Tortatacca. We have 51 legacy riders returning, and a legacy rider is someone who's ridden in all rides every 19 years. There are 43,903 riders since 2000, $103,321 donated to the ICA since 2006. There is a total of 294 miles that are ridden on the day, and that we have riders from 44 states since the summer of 2006, when we started tracking that data. So we always have to have a quiz. How many riders registered for the Century Ride, which is the 100-mile ride last year, do we think?
375.
No one got it. 665. It actually is one of our more popular rides. It's really accessible for people who are wanting to try distance riding, since it's not a race. And we get some really cool stories out of the 100. We had some nine-year-old boys who have been neighbors ride it together, and their dad kind of rode behind them. And so it's really cool. And man, they go far. So these are all of our rides this year. We're going to have a 16-mile ride, which is typically our family ride, 30-mile, 35-mile, and we just split those up just for traffic, since there's so many people who choose to go. Those that can get that little extra kick-in, we can split the groups up. 47, we're going to have a 65-mile ride, which is different than years past. It's typically been around 70, 72, but just with construction and being able to get something cohesive, we went to 65. And then, of course, our Century Ride. We have a lot of really amazing major sponsors who have been with us for a long time. Domino's is epic. They give away pizza at the end of the ride. I say that this is the only bike ride you go on and gain weight. We feed you the whole day. Boyer helps to construct all of the scaffolding that goes up at the start and finish, and it just really transformed the high school parking lot. It's hard to even imagine what it looks like until you get there, and you're like, whoa, this is a huge event. So we're really lucky for all of the people that contribute to the success. This is the rider shirt this year. So if you want to volunteer, this is going to be your shirt. We are always looking for volunteers, all of you civic-minded humans. We are always looking for volunteers. We do have a rest stop in Eden Prairie. Rest stop volunteering is one of, I always love the rest stops because I run them, but it's really fun. There's music and food, and you just can hang out and talk to people. So it doesn't have to be a super active volunteering shift. It can be just come and hang out with a group. If you have a business that you want to promote, we do sponsorships at the rest stops, and so it doesn't cost you anything, just a little bit of your time. These are some quotes of why we always survey our riders and ask them why they choose to be here with us. And these were some quotes that Tim found really moving and added in here. I think that the riding with my son, the first Century Ride for both of us, is just really cool. There's actually a group, family, that they ride a three-person bike, and they've been riding it every year. And it's so fun to watch them cross the finish line. So we're almost at a bingo with having riders from everywhere in the U.S. If you know anyone from Idaho, Wyoming, Hawaii, Alabama, Vermont, or Delaware that will be here the first weekend in August, 16 miles is not hard to pick up. So help us get that bingo. These are all the counties that have participated in the event, and so you can see it's really got a widespread throughout of our whole state. Like I said, we really always need help with volunteers. There are really short shifts. There are some longer shifts. We struggle each year to really find people to help us with safety, so just ensuring that riders are safe. And so if you have any experience with being a sweep or a ride captain, and you're interested in volunteering, we would love to hear from you. I have some news you probably have heard maybe, but Tim Lipfin, who's our executive director, will be retiring from Minnetonka Community Education. So he will finish his time with us after Tortatacca, and then will be available as a consultant through the year of 2025. He created this ride and grew it from really little to now this giant event, and this is a really point of pride for Tim. So he just really wants to make sure that you all hear how thankful he is for the time that you've given him, for the ability to have this be a part of your community, and that he will miss all of you in Tortatacca. See, I told you, just a few minutes. Since August 3rd, 2024, we will see you there. Any questions for me?
Do you know how many people outside the U.S. come to ride, like Canada or?
I don't know that we've tracked that data. I definitely have helped people from Ireland. Like, they came and they were like, we have no idea where we're going. And I was like, well, you're obviously not from here, so where can I help you get? So I think a lot of people that have family in Minnesota will come into it, but I don't know how many countries. That'd be a fun data point to get. Yeah.
Molly, Beau, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks a lot.
Have a nice night.
So Rick, you put a lot of time and effort into the Government Academy, and this has to be a fun evening for you as well, but it is for all of us, too. So with that, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You'll take it from here.
Thank you. Yeah, council members, you've been through this a few times before, but it's, I think, one of the best community engagement activities that we have in the community, or that I know of that many cities have. And it's called the City Government Academy. And for, I think, it's five of the past seven or eight years, COVID interrupted a few of these academies. The city devotes, and I, the city, I mean, all of our departments devote evenings to spend with about 25 residents each and every year to take, I won't call it a deep dive, but maybe at least a dip in the pool, the shallow pool of city operations, and maybe getting behind the scenes a little bit on city government. And over the course of six different evenings, and they're organized by department, you know, we start off with what we'll call a city council or administration evening. So you were all here your first time, and you're here for your graduation. You begin and end in the same location. But also, these residents taking all this time, which you don't often see anymore, people devoting, you know, three to four hours a night for six consecutive nights, not including graduation, 25 hours to spend and evening with the city. As I was saying just a second ago, administration night, police night, fire night, community development night, parks and recreation night, and public works night, and an ability for people to, again, get behind the scenes of what we do. And we've been doing this, as I said, every spring. So hopefully, and maybe some of you, if you have a few words to say when you get your diploma, can encourage others to apply for this in future years. But Mayor, you were there at the kickoff. I know our council's involved, but our employees and all of our departments love showing the residents what we do and how we do it. And I think a more educated and engaged citizenry is one that's going to be more civically involved and civically motivated. And these are people that also join city commissions and get involved and volunteer in different ways, whether it's an election judge. We've had people join the police reserves. We've had people join the fire department. Not that you have to do any of those things, but several people see this as a stepping stone into further involvement. But at a minimum, it's a chance to have some exposure to your city government. And again, I thank all of you for doing that. So tonight, Mayor, is their graduation night. And what we ask is, the council members are going to go down. I'm going to bring the diplomas down. I'm going to, in alphabetical order, call each one of your names, and it's great that there's family here, family and friends as well. But as you come up, you'll receive your diploma from the mayor and city council, and I think there might be one or two, three, four, five, or six of you, that if you, as you pass through and get your diploma, you can certainly speak into the microphone and say a word or two or three about your experience, because I think it's good to share that with the community as well. And then you're going to move on out, and you're going to have your graduation party and your graduation picture. And Sarah is going to be a part of that. And I want to point out Sarah, because Sarah Ashenbeck, in the office of the city manager, was, she was part of it. She was at almost every minute of every session and communicated with everybody throughout. So she's the glue of the event as well, and thank you for that, Sarah. But she's going to help with the festivities after the diploma, when you make your way out of the council chambers. So if that's okay, Mayor, I don't have anything else to add, other than if we want to make our way down with the council can to the podium down here, and we'll start the graduation ceremony.
And just in case someone was listening, they are really interested, it's six consecutive Wednesday evenings.
Correct.
So not consecutive. That would be difficult. But yeah, we'll come down and be with you just a moment.
Yeah, not six days in a row if I said that. Sorry.
Is that in your order?
Not sure.
Hey, that's a city manager's job. Also, I want to mention, too, and I don't know if we're going to get this on the air or not, but during graduation, we like to play a slideshow, so you guys can see some pictures that we take during the event of all of what you're doing in action, too. So we've got the slideshow. All right. So again, in alphabetical order, I know there might be one or two of you that are not here, but it's awesome that we have almost everybody here to come up. And I think, I'm not sure if, actually, my first person is Bob Bowes. I don't know if Bob Bowes was able to make it. I don't see. So Bob wasn't able to be here, but Bob did graduate. Our next graduate is Brandon Burnett. Brandon, come on up.
I guess I'll do a little bit of both. I guess this was a really great experience. I've always been a little bit curious on the city side of things, and so just scratching a little bit of a curiosity itch. And honestly, it's been a great conversation starter on people ask what you're doing Wednesday night, and then kind of diving into it and spreading more information for everybody and spreading the curiosity. So thank you for giving me that opportunity.
Thank you. Cecilia Cervantes. Let's clap for everybody. Oh, it's okay.
Well, we are certainly fortunate to live in the delightful city of Eden Prairie. And I've known this for the 16 years that my husband and I have lived here. And it was by chance that we decided to live in Eden Prairie when I moved here. We moved here from Alameda, California. But we certainly made the right choice. And the time that I've spent on the Parks Commission has certainly opened my eyes to the fabulous work that we, and resources that are offered in the Parks area. But through the City Government Academy, it's really been a further eye-opener in terms of the outstanding services, the resources, the commitment, the expertise of the directors, and Rick as the main leader. But it has been a pleasure to get to know the police chief, the fire chief, Matt, and Scott, Alicia, and then, of course, we've got Robert, Julia, and I know Amy well. So muchisimas gracias for this opportunity, because I know that the future of Eden Prairie will continue to thrive. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Andrea Erickson. There she is.
I don't know how to follow Cecilia. That was quite a speech, but it was an amazing experience. I really enjoyed it, learned a lot, and met a lot of great people. So thank you.
Yulia. Yulia Gordiva.
Thank you so much. I will just quickly say.
I really, really enjoyed it. So thank you for this amazing opportunity. So I'm really proud to live in Eden Prairie with this crew who is taking care of us. Yes, thank you.
Daniel Hendrickson.
Boy, this was such a great opportunity. I didn't realize what an amazing city we really, really have. Things that impressed me are parks, just that we have parks readily available within a half a mile to every single resident. I thought it was really cool. Our water, the purity of our water that we have by seeing the water treatment plant, which is one of the most beautiful buildings I've seen, you know, here. Also, gosh, it's a blur, but just programs that are available, like finding out that we have a solar farm, and just the work with sustainability. And it's really exciting to see the direction that the city is going. And I'm proud to be a member of that. So thank you.
All right, next we have Dwayne Hookum.
Moved here in 1961, so I think I've got most of you beat. Just continuing to learn, and it was a fantastic academy, and I think you've made ambassador of all of us. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Eric King.
Wow, such a good experience. When I first joined this program, I had a mission, because people said government just wastes money. So my mission was to find out how you guys waste money. So the first two weeks, I was very impressed. You work in this beautiful facilities, and you have exercise equipment everywhere. Everybody was enthusiastic, and they would get goodies after every meeting. It's like, it's like working for Google. Wow, you know? And as the week goes on, after the fifth and last week, my brain has started working, and I realized this is such a skill, such a complex operations, and sophisticated, and I just come impressed, very impressed. I cannot say you guys are not wasting money, but it's very comprehensive operation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Michael Kelly.
Some graduates were a little bit questionable when the grading came in, but we made some exceptions and...
Thank you, Doctor.
Thanks, Rick. As a man of few words, I'm just kidding. What do I have, Sarah? 10 minutes? Okay. I just want to say that this academy has given me a newfound appreciation for the city of Eden Prairie. Mayor Case, city manager Rick Getchow, and all of the incredible people that they manage make Eden Prairie the best city in the state of Minnesota. The six weeks that we spent together provided so much insight to all that takes place behind the scenes to not only maintain this beautiful city, but to keep it on a path of constant improvement. Add to this the comfort that comes from witnessing the police and fire departments' selfless teams of men and women with hearts for the safety and security of all Eden Prairie citizens. And finally, a big shout out to Sarah and all of the other people who helped organize and implement this city academy. On behalf of all of my fellow students, I offer all of you a round of applause.
All right, next we have Warren Loken.
First of all, thank you to the city for sponsoring this event. I was really impressed with the program. You know, I learned a lot about what it takes to run a city. It's amazing, the infrastructure, the equipment, all the different resources, the budgets that are put in place to get a city run. But I was most impressed with were the people. And I think you recognize that the people you have in the city are important and are an amazing resource. And that really was evident in the academy. All the people that were participating and presenting were essentially very energetic and engaged, and you could tell they wanted to be there. And I think that was a real representation and sign of the city itself. So I learned a lot, and I was really happy to be a part of it. Thank you.
Next graduate, Jennifer Meyer.
Well, thank you so much. I really want to just express a lot of gratitude for the time and the effort that went into putting this all together. I came in with some expectations as a new Parks and Rec Commissioner to really just understand our city better and to try to start connecting dots and see how I can help better with that particular role. But what I will say is this has sparked a whole new interest for me in city government that I never anticipated nor would have expected. So I'm very grateful for that, too. I have no idea where that will lead. I am so thankful for the opportunities of the thoughtful presentations that went into each and every night. Each night just kept impressing us with the amount of knowledge, the hands-on activities. I really appreciated meeting all the leaders and the employees, and the passion is truly evident across Eden Prairie. So you have created a group of ambassadors, and very grateful for that opportunity. Thank you.
All right, next we have Negapan Narainen.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for this amazing opportunity, that I got to understand how the city operates and functions much better after attending this program. And special thanks to all the staff members and also to Sarah for organizing this so smooth. It was really run so smooth every week, and the overall program was very well-run. And yeah, my overall experience is nothing short of amazing. And I have been telling about this, I've been raving about this program to all my friends who wanted to definitely apply and participate in the upcoming years. Thanks, thanks all.
Next, we have Jessica Awaka.
Thank you, everybody. I would just say, this was a very, yes, it's a time commitment, but it was very, very, it was fun. On Wednesday nights, after I would get off of work, I'd be excited. be excited to come. And my husband is here tonight. Every single night, I'd come home and tell him everything I'd learned. And I'd be so ecstatic. I'm telling everybody that I know that lives in Eden Prairie that this is a must-do. So, thank you.
Farah Osman.
Hi, I just want to say a few words. Actually, first of all, I want to say thanks to people who arranged for this program. This program, actually, it was amazing program because first time when I moved to Eden Prairie, I didn't know anything about Eden Prairie. I just moved. I don't know why. But after I learned this program, I have an answer for the people who always ask me, "Why did you choose to live in Eden Prairie?"
Next, we have Deb Ruin.
I'm just going to say, I grew up in Richfield for 18 years, but I've lived in Eden Prairie 24 years. And I've recently retired, so I'm looking forward to being an election judge and much more. So, thank you.
All right, next graduate is Steve Schumacher.
Well, everybody is speaking, so I'll speak as well. I want to thank the city for putting this together, for allowing us this opportunity. It was great to know that there's a Packer fan that lives in Eden Prairie and having lots of conversations with him. I really enjoyed getting to know my neighbors, folks that we see around town now. And it's great to have a larger community. And I want to thank the city staff for their enthusiasm each week, talking about what they do and their passion for the city. So, thank you very much.
And next person we have is one that we've had a couple times where we've had, whether, I think we've actually had a mother and a daughter, and we've had a few husbands and wives. So, Barbara Smith is next, but Peter, I believe, is a previous graduate. He's an alumni. And we have Richard Weaver, alumni, and we have Steve Clifton, and we have some other alumni in here as well. So, it's really neat that we have to separate you from different years. You can't be in the same year together. But it's nice that you both can go through it.
I'd say this program was everything my husband said it was. And I've already been passing the word on to my neighbors, "You've got to come over here and get it." And one lady was wanting to know about the water. Was it safe to cook and drink it, other than the spring water that we were told if you get the big gallon, super big gallons, you might not want to drink that at the end of the summer. So, thank you very much for the information.
All right, Marshall Severson.
Yeah, City Government Academy was an awesome experience. Thank you very much for opening, yeah, my eyes to seeing a lot of things behind the scenes. It was great. So, thank you, staff, Rick, Sarah. Appreciate it.
Our next graduate, Robert Taylor.
Well, I just want to say this was an awesome academy. I currently sit on the planning commission and kind of came in with an aspiration of trying to get a better understanding of what we do within the city that will allow me to do a better job as a planning commissioner. And I got every bit of that out of the academy. So, thanks to the staff. Sarah, thank you as well. And I'm looking forward to helping Eden Prairie grow. Thank you.
All right, next, I believe, is Mr. Gary Watkins.
I was amazed, every week I'd come home with factoids about a little this and a little that. How many parks are in Eden Prairie has been the biggest question I've asked people around town. Everybody guesses 15, 20, 25, and I say 52, and they go, "Wow." But anyway, I was also amazed at all the backroom stuff that nobody ever hears about that goes into running a city. And the whole, there's so much background stuff that is just out of sight, out of mind. So, thank you very much.
Next, we have Lauren Weaver.
Just quickly, thank you to the city for this opportunity. I knew it would be a great program, and it was better than I imagined. Duplicate everything everybody else said, but nobody talked about driving a snowplow, so I'm going to mention that. You don't just drive it 10 feet. You go all the way around the building and even through this little narrow spot where there's a retaining wall and a car. And anyway, I did it. So, it was fun.
Next, we have Susan Weaver.
Well, I love going to school and I love taking classes. And this was one of the best I've ever had. No tuition, no tests, no papers to write, great content, extraordinary instructors, and little presents at the end of every night. It was awesome, absolutely awesome. And I just want to say one thing about staff. Without exception, and we met a lot of staff, without exception, they were well-prepared, well-organized, articulate, generous with their time, patient with all of us semi-not-so-well-informed people. And without exception, they spoke highly of one another and highly of their supervisors and the whole team. There were lots of "we's" and very few "I's" when they talked about what they loved about their city. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
And our final graduate is Derek Witt. Yeah, I don't know if Derek could make it. I thought you were going to come up and accept on his behalf. That'd be okay. But yeah, so we had two that weren't able to make it, but that's a really great turnout for graduation. And I don't know if you have any final words, Mayor, but again, I'd like to thank all of you for your time. Because as I mentioned at our first session, you don't often see as much time that people are putting into their communities in the last 20 or 30 years. We're seeing a little bit of an erosion in time spent volunteering and civic engagement. And this is our chance to kind of keep pushing back and building up on community. So, thank you.
I'll talk from up there. If you can wait one minute. I just, well, in a huge, big way, say thank you to all of you. Several themes came out of all of your comments, which I am so glad we took the time to allow you that opportunity to give us that feedback, because I think it's important for this council to hear that as well. But themes, we heard, I mean, obviously, clearly are incredible staff. And we know that, we believe that. But to hear that reflected back is amazing. To hear about the amazing programs we have in this city, all the backend information about what we do and as we deliver 50-some million dollars of services a year to our residents, which is what they want. They, you know, we, it's not our, it's our decisions, but it's not our will that's just simply being implemented. We pick up and reflect what people want us to be doing. And if they don't want us to be doing it, they have something called elections, right, where they elect people supposedly who will then do what they want. But evidently, many of us have been reelected. We're doing, I hope, what people want, and you all reflected that back. Several of you mentioned that the term ambassador, and I just feel so strongly that as these classes of 25 people get more and more out in the community, we get to see that. I don't often go out on Nextdoor, and I never respond. They don't archive, so we're not really allowed or permitted to respond as elected officials, because everything we write or you write us is public data. Just remember that. But I did go out on Nextdoor, and there was a post, I don't know, three, four weeks ago, on water. And a woman had filled her sink or something, and it was not good-looking water. And immediately, 44, 50 posts responded. Two-thirds of them were, "Yeah, Eden Prairie water is terrible. Bloomington water is fantastic. I want it." I'm not disparaging Bloomington water, but I wanted so badly to respond. You do know they get it out of the Mississippi River. We get our water from 600 feet down the ground, the Prairie to Shenanah, for in the Jordan, our water. You could bottle it, you know? I mean, I didn't. I wanted to. But what was so cool about that post, there were like four or five ambassadors. I think there were one or two of you, but there were several others that had been graduates from the past academies that responded in. Not necessarily to take her on, but just to say, "You do know we have some of the purest, cleanest, finest water in the country." I mean, that's not an unfair statement. And that was just so nice to see our graduates being the experts, right, and sharing the information and connecting then people back to our staff as well. So, with that, thank you, thank you, thank you. Counsel, anything else you just want to add? I mean, this is always a phenomenal evening.
I think we heard Sarah's name quite a few times. So, I think it's, Sarah, I think you did a great job.
Absolutely.
Good job.
Totally. Are we good? Okay.
We're good, yes. Time for pictures and cake and all the other graduation festivities that you remember from many, many years ago. Some of you.
Thank you, everyone. You can stay, by the way, but I know that the party sounds a little bit more possibly fun downstairs. And Rick, I don't know if you want me to turn it immediately to Amy or if you want to say a word. We can wait a second.
Mayor, I am going to turn it to Amy, but I thought we would just kind of kill time here, so everyone can get
Yes, well, we'll let people exit.
Out of their room. We'll let them walk their way through. And then Amy can walk us through the donations.
Okay. Amy, donations are always a nice part of the evening as well. And I'll just make my comment proactively, preemptively here, but even though we do tax people and we spend their tax dollars back on them, these extra gifts help our tax dollars go further. So, Amy, take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. For our quarterly donation report, we received a total of $9,250. And again, those help offset taxpayers' money, budgeted funds for special events programming. It allows us to do a lot of ups and extras when you go to things like 4th of July. That will help pay for some of the things you see at those type of events. So, with this quarter, we had a $250 donation from Summit Place Senior Campus for senior center programs and special events. From T-Mobile, we received $7,500 for the 3rd and 4th of July hometown celebration. From Prairie Bluff Senior Living, we received $100 for the July 2nd Salute to Service Concert. The Health Source of Eden Prairie donated $50 for the senior center-made bingo program. Mary Sue Inghman donated $100 for the Eden Prairie Community Band. JA Price Agency donated $1,000 for the 3rd and 4th of July hometown celebration. And Shalom donated $250 for the senior center programs and special events. So, we just give all of those that donated a special thank you for their generosity, and we thank you for their support.
Thank you. Well said. And we do need a motion, counsel, to accept the entire resolution accepting all of the donations.
I move to adopt a resolution accepting multiple second quarter 2024 donations to parks and recreation.
Sir, second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Moving on to the agenda, I do believe that Councilmember Narayn has one item to add to under Councilmember reports. Does anybody else have any additions to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda with the one addition?
Move to approve the agenda with one addition.
Sir, second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. I actually didn't give you a discussion time. That's okay. Moving on to minutes. Any questions or corrections, edits on either the workshop held back on May 21st or the city council meeting? If not, if there could be a motion to accept, receive both.
I move to approve the following city council minutes. Council workshop held Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. City council meeting held Tuesday, May 21st, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right. Moving on to consent calendar A through Q. These are fairly, they're not necessarily perfunctory, but we clump them together, thinking we may not need discussion. Are there any items you wish to pull for further discussion or separate votes? If not, is there a motion to approve items A through Q on the consent calendar?
I'll move for approval of items A through Q on the consent calendar.
Sir, second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right. Mr. Getchow, we do have one public hearing this evening, the Nexus Innovation Center. I'll turn it over to you.
We do. Thank you, Mayor. So, we have an applicant that's requesting approval to build a 185,000 or almost 186,000 square foot, one-story industrial building at 6131 Blue Circle Drive. Blue Circle Drive is probably not familiar to most, because it's actually on the, kind of in the Opus area of Minnetonka, north of Highway 62. It's the former campus of American Family Insurance. But not many people know that that portion of that property is in Eden Prairie. And it is in Eden Prairie in our northern city limits. And American Family Insurance no longer occupies that property. What is proposed, and the proponent will walk you through their development, is a new building that would be located there that will face the highway. In the back of the building will face the two streets. And the property is guided industrial flex tech and zoned office. And the applicant is requesting approval to that, a zoning change. It fits the comprehensive plan, but a zoning change to I-2. Again, it's consistent with the comp plan, as I said. There are no waivers being requested at all. The applicant is here to walk you through their proposed development. And the staff and the developer could answer any questions that the city council may have. So, the applicant is welcome to come forward.
Good evening. My name is Josh Budisch. I'm at 5116 Skyline Drive, Edina, Minnesota. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any formal presentation?
Sorry, I am going through. I'm sorry. Yes. Forgot about that part. I was here about a month ago for planning commission. So, my apologies. I did want to say before I start, it's really, we do a lot of presentations in front of city councils, and it was really refreshing just to see the really positive environment that you guys have created here. It's a testament to the leadership. So, just thought I'd share that. So, Nexus at Opus Park. We are at 6131 Blue Circle Drive in Eden Prairie, Minnesota. You see in front of you a building rendering of the project. Little bit of us, the developer, Endeavor Development. We're locally based. We specialize in industrial real estate development. Done several projects throughout the Twin Cities, as well as a couple down in DeMora. throughout the Twin Cities, as well as a couple down in Des Moines and one in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. I'm the founder and principal of the company, and with me tonight is my team as well. Some highlights in the property. As stated, it's the former office campus for American Family Insurance. We're proposing a 186,000 square foot business center, requesting a rezone from office to I-2, which is consistent with the 2040 comprehensive plan. We are within Opus Park, as well as city of Eden Prairie. We are in conversation through the city of Eden Prairie with the city of Minnetonka regarding roads and utilities that service the property, which are
As long as you brought that up, those were going to be my questions.
Yeah.
First question, this might be for Julie, Rick, but if you kind of draw the line, trying to visualize where the horizontal northern border of Eden Prairie is, and you draw it to the east, you grab that building right there to the right, and you grab part of that lake. But is that not in Eden Prairie, or is all that in Eden Prairie as well?
Mayor, members of the council, if you're looking at the screen, the property on both sides of the parcel identified as project location are within Eden Prairie.
So that building to the right, it looks like two little buildings, right? It looks like maybe one of them is in Eden Prairie and one is in Minnetonka. Is that possible? Or I've just never really seen that line solid, you know?
I believe they are both in Eden Prairie, Mayor.
Okay. And how about that pond, then, to the right half of that?
I believe that's Eden Prairie as well.
All the pond?
I believe so. But now you're making me nervous because you're looking at me very diligently.
Well, only because, is it a natural pond, or is it actually a stormwater drainage?
It's a stormwater pond, I believe.
And could all the properties north of 62 that are still in Eden Prairie utilize some of that? Or that, I saw that they had two nurd ponds on their own property right now. We were not, there was no capacity within that pond that we could utilize?
I would defer that question to Robert.
Robert? I was asking it to Robert, Julie, not to you. I'm just kidding.
I'm pulling up some maps right now, just so I can see.
Not a super picky. I mean, I don't need to know it, obviously, to approve this night. More curiosity. But, I mean, I'm learning. So thank you so much for bringing this project forward. I'm learning about our northernmost boundary. And I think not only maybe me and some of the council members might have been a little surprised some of this was Eden Prairie, but I'm sure, I'm sure a lot of our residents as well. And that was my other question. You bring up the utilities, so I'm assuming Minnetonka's utilities are going to service this property. And then money gets somehow transferred back and forth somehow, and it just happens?
Yeah.
Okay, joint power agreements or something?
Yeah, we have a cooperative agreement with Minnetonka about how the properties are served, who does the billing, and who collects. So all of that has been worked out in agreement. We've had
So if any of our corporate residents up there have issues with snowpiling and water and whatever, that's like, hey, that's great, go call Minnetonka. I mean, at some point, they have to work that through with another city.
Yeah, that's correct.
I do know the mayor up there, we can make some calls. It's just fascinating. And of course, it makes sense that the boundary was there long before that spaghetti junction of highways, you know, was thrown in. And just intriguing that that's all Eden Prairie. I'm sure Minnetonka would love the tax base, but we are not giving it up, so. We could maybe do a trade. Let's talk that later, but go ahead. I'm sorry, I'm
No, no. For what it's worth
Good learning for us, so thank you so much.
Sure. Those two buildings are definitely within the city of Eden Prairie. That's a group called Wonderlic. And then to the west of us is that triangle piece that is wooded, that's also Eden Prairie.
Who owns that land?
Cardinal Glass. Cardinal Glass.
Just undeveloped, just?
Undeveloped. They had acquired it, I want to say, five, six years ago for a new facility that they ended up not building.
Okay.
We inquired about it and didn't make a part.
Got it. Proceed. Thank you so much for allowing me to cause you to digress.
So we propose a redevelopment of the property from suburban office to what we call modern business center. This is a single-story, 186,000 square foot facility. The front of the building is on the south, which is at the bottom of the page. That will overlook Highway 62. We're very excited about that presence along the highway. We have sides on the west and east, and then the rear of the property being on the north, which is mainly for loading, for which we've created a buffer between the property and the public We are utilizing sustainable strategies as part of some of the city's efforts. Those include, but are not limited to, infrastructure for electric vehicle charging stations and solar panels to go on the roof, low VOC materials, NHTAR compliance, and Excel's EDA program, which I assume you're familiar with. We do have a robust landscaping plan with conservation of perimeter trees wherever possible, and then ample parking to allow for a variety of uses and expandable as well for job creation within the city. And yes, we do have stormwater pond on site for detention on the south and east. We brought along exterior material finishes, free to look at if you'd like. Here you see the key. It's a combination of painted precast, stone veneer, metal canopy, glass and glazing. You see the elevations. It's really made to appear as though it's a two-story facility from the exterior, particularly along the south side where it gets the most visibility from Highway 62. If you recognize these designs, they are now part of our best practices at Endeavor for what we deem to be, you know, really well-located suburban infill modern business centers. We've done nine of these buildings up in Maple Grove at Arbor Lakes. So if you happen to notice them, that would be why. If you haven't, I encourage you to check them out. They're, it's an award-winning project that we're all very proud of, that we want to replicate here. And this gives you an idea of what it will look like once it's completed. This is from the southwest corner.
That, that looks like more than one-story building. Is it very high ceiling?
So the clear height inside is 32, or excuse me, I'm 28, I'm sorry. It's made to appear as though it's two stories. It can be two stories, but given we're developing it on a speculative basis, we anticipate being one story.
Looks beautiful.
Thank you.
So it's just, so it's high, high ceiling, 28-foot?
Yes, yes. Yep. So what you would see, once we have a tenant, once it's finished, for your office space, you'll usually have drop ceiling around 10 feet. And then for other uses like light manufacturing, R&amp;D, you may see that, or maybe it's open to ceiling. And then for your warehousing component, it's going to look and feel like a warehouse once you're inside.
So in the back end could be a warehouse?
Yes, sir.
Stack stuff up?
Yep, that's right.
And I know other councilmembers are thinking what I'm going to ask, but when you spec a building, do you anticipate that the tenant may or may not want solar? And would you, what do you do in advance that proactively anticipates? Is it all wired? Is it structurally ready for panels, et cetera?
Yeah, so I'll tell you, typically, we, we would do that once we have a tenant. So in advance, we wouldn't do anything to set up for it. But in this case, we have, and that really was driven by city goals. So what we've done in advance of having a tenant is we brought in infrastructure for electric vehicle charging stations in front. Now, we weren't sure exactly where to put them because we weren't sure who's coming and where the office will be. So we've laid it out so that it's centralized and then can be expanded if, for example, the tenant wants to locate office on the west or east. So we've spent the upfront capital, all the underground work, frankly, to add a few charging stations. I think they're like a few grand per, so it's not huge, but it's set up on the front end to accommodate that. And then for solar panels on the roof, that was a bigger cost that we chose to take on. That's beefing up the structural steel, the support of the roof to accommodate, which we've also done.
Nice.
And provided conduit to lead to that. What's really interesting is, when you think more about speculative development, the benefits are ultimately to the tenant, to the occupant of the building. And, you know, things like rebates, payback periods go to that tenant. So us, as developers, are still learning how to accommodate that, accommodate cities, and make the project feasible. And we feel like we've done that here.
Good. Thank you.
It's, it's really great to see that you already prepared. I remember a couple of years ago, when we asked these questions, are you wired to the solar radio or EV station? And the developer just kind of not even thought about it. But now, every time, most of the developer coming to, in front of us, you guys are already prepared. So thank you so much.
I want to understate what you said and thank our staff, that he said that it came out of early conversations here with our staff. So thank you, but also thank our staff for
I was just going to say, I mean, sorry, we do need to be encouraged at times, but honestly, a part of it was staff being understanding of, once we have a tenant, we'll know where to put it. We can walk them through the benefits. But for now, we want to set it up, so that's a possibility. So it was a great experience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
You said earlier, you've built nine of these in Maple Grove. All of them about 200,000 square feet?
No, sir. So building sizes within Arbor Lakes Business Park range from about 100,000 to 270,000?
That's a lot of square footage.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just wanted to add that I think it's a good-looking building. But I would, when we get these projects, a lot of the times, the caliber inches of the trees are not, are, you know, they end up paying in lieu. And I was wondering, is, is it, did you, have you maximized the amount of trees on there, or could you add any more?
As far as leaving what's existing?
Mm-hmm.
We really have. The maximum site coverage ratio within the city is 30%. And we're right at that 30%. For us, you know, typically, these projects are in the 33% to 35% range. But in being held to that 30%, it creates additional space for green space, for trees. And so we really have done that. If you go back, and I can, I don't know if it's still up, but, you know, we've left mature trees along perimeter, centered the building. We really did do our best on it.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. How many employees you expect in terms of capacity in that building?
So, good question. Again, it's speculative. So what we can do is design it to accommodate a variety of uses. And of course, those uses come with a variety of types of jobs, number of jobs. What I typically refer to is the parking count. And I don't have it in front of me, but I want to say we are around, we around two per thousand, guys?
278.
272 car parking spaces. So I would tell you, that's guidance. It is expandable. But as we modernize these facilities, one thing we point to is the light rail transit station coming in nearby. Of course, there's walking paths, biking paths. I mean, we would love to see more, but it really is something that is based upon what the market will bear.
I just wonder if I can ask a question. When I'm looking at this, I'm looking at two sides have stormwater ponds. You have the highway there. You have, on the other side, you have 12 dock doors. Signage. Now, I know you can't be specific to what the signage says, but I'm not seeing anything as far as opposed, where it would be.
We did not include that, but we, we would anticipate our tenant wanting to take advantage of that great visibility along the highway. And I would, I would say it would be based upon the city code for size, location, font and color.
There certainly, I guess, would be room along there.
Right. So you don't see, at this point, you don't see any monument signage out there? Mostly building?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
The monument, frankly, I think the building signage will get much more presence along the highway. The monument would be along
You think the way it sits in there
Yeah, loop circle.
All right. Anything urgently more than you have in your report, or should we open this up to the public?
No, sir. Open.
Perfect. Thank you so much. You can take a seat, and we'll call you back up.
Thanks.
Counsel, let's go ahead and hold the public hearing. If you, I'll give you the option if you want to close the public hearing and then have more question time, or just go right into a motion. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this particular proposal tonight, the Nexus Innovation Seeing and hearing, or seeing, none. Counsel, do you, are you ready to close the public hearing? Go ahead and make a motion. We can still discuss. I mean, we can ask questions. Then if somebody would make the entire motion, that would be great.
Close to the public hearing and approve the first reading of ordinance for a zoning district, change from office to industrial I-2, and direct staff to prepare development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions, and authorizing the issuance of an early land alteration permit for the Nexus Innovation Center, the request of the developer subject to condition outline in the permit.
Sir, second?
Second.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Do you have more comments, questions? What's your pleasure?
I'm ready to vote.
Let's go ahead and take the vote, then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Pass is welcome. Wherever you are there, thank you so much for coming to our town that looks like it might be a little bit in Minnetonka, but it's actually in Eden Prairie. Thank you so much. All right. Payment of claims. Counsel, is, are there, these are basically, in the classic old days, our checks, it's our expenditures, it's the people we wrote money to or the organization. So any questions of any amount on the pages and pages of our claims data that you received in your packet? If not, is there a motion to approve the payment of claims as submitted?
I move approval of payment of claims as submitted.
Sir, second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. So, Mr. Gettrill, before we move right into student on commissions, I just want to, and maybe the camera can turn to the audience, but I just want to point out Dr. Josh Swanson. And Alicia doesn't want to be on that. You know what, Alicia? You're even more on it now because you got up and you moved and everybody's looking. That's our, our director of human resources, Alicia. So thank you so much. Dr. Swanson, way above and beyond, I'm sure he's here this evening because Eden Prairie students are being appointed to our commissions. And we are so, so thrilled with so many of our partnerships between the city and the school district. And a lot of that is that we serve the same constituents. But even more of it is that we have people on our board, or on our school board and on our city council, and we have staff, Mr. Gettrill, and then Dr. Swanson, and, and other staff, that we get along, and we like each other, and we partner so well. So I just appreciate, I know you have a billion things on your calendar, and you came to this this evening and set for an hour or so. We just so appreciate that. I just wanted to point out to the world that he is here supporting the students, that we are going to appoint to our commissions. And one other quick thing, I was talking to another mayor, and they were whining and complaining, in fact, several mayors in this area that they could not get students. They can't get enough nominees to even have a couple students on each commission. And one city I won't name is not even going to have the program because they couldn't get enough students. And I'm like, you know, I kind, I mean, it was all I could do not to jump up and brag, but I'm like, we don't have that problem. And again, I think a lot of it's the partnership that we have. But we have, you'll see the names that we're going to read off, a lot of students. And we love them being on our commissions and the insight and the input that they give to these different commissions. So, Mr. Gettrill, go ahead. Sorry, I probably stole your thunder there.
No, you did a little bit, but, but those are great.
But Alicia's stolen more of it by like being the center of, on the camera than you.
Yeah, well, that's right. She, that's really odd, too, that she would shy away from the camera. But I, but I would say a couple of great points because our partnership with the school, and you've said this many times, Mayor, we've got, we're lucky in a sense that, like, all of the city of Eden Prairie and all the school districts are somewhat contiguous. Yes, the city of Eden Prairie has a few neighborhoods that are in other school districts, but I think
Including the Nexus Building, evidently.
Yeah, including the Nexus Building, a little bit, a shady oak
What we thought was Minnetonka.
That's right. That's not in the Hopkins, or the, that might be, that might be Hopkins School District. But we do have a great partnership with the school on many, many different projects. And students on commissions is one of those as well. And you do not, you need to, you need to live in Eden Prairie to be in the program. You don't You don't need to go to Eden Prairie School, but 90% of the students do. And as you said, Mayor, we continue to get way more students than we can have room for. And our directors and managers and liaisons go out of their way to get as many as they can on the commissions, sometimes six, seven or eight. So if you think about, you know, commissions that might have seven, eight, nine people and you have seven, eight, nine students, they'll have meetings of almost 20 people. But we do want the students to participate, to be involved in this program. Yes, it's something that you probably can put on a resume or that may be attractive for, you know, post-secondary education or your resume, but we really want the students to participate and be involved, and our commissions do a great job of providing some actual work for them as well and some true experience. You as council members have seen many of them present to you when we've had awards and we've had programs. It's the commission members that are saying to the students, we want you to do this. And it's been such a great program. And as you said, Mayor, there, I don't see any way in which our momentum runs out because we have to focus on the seniors usually. We say that if we get 50, 60 people and we can only appoint maybe 30 or 40, we do focus on the seniors. And we tell the juniors, come back and apply next year, which I think many of them did. Applications did come in within the last month. We're asking that you make the appointment right now for the next school year. So these students that will be seniors, most of them, there might be a few juniors in here, in September, we'll have a student commission term that will run from September until next May. And as you read many names, again, I think there's maybe 30 names to read. We have students on all of our commissions with the exception of planning, and we're always very excited to see them involved. So we ask that you as council members, however you want to do it, taking turns by each commission, make a motion to appoint these students to these respective commissions.
Sounds good. I think I'll start, and I'll go to my left and swing around to Councilmember Freiberg, whatever your name is, Freiberg. I was getting, I was working on it. And just a little, just a little mistake. Now I'm really going to be throwing on these names. All right. I can't even get Freiberg out. All right, ready. Motion moved, I move to appoint to the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission Aditi Junuga, Bergen Papa, Daniel Jiang, Matthew Weedman, Patrick Anderson, Samaya Wali, Seth Johnson and Vincent Schultz, if you would continue on.
I appoint to Heritage Preservation Commission Amutka Potamashvati, Jude Kambal, Anika Rice, Jacob Horgi, Khadi Khadi Kryder.
I'll move to appoint to the Human Rights and Diversity Commission Uyana Aurora, Kayana Unajja, Alicia Shaw, Melody Lee, Swara Albi, Tamia Hassan and Zahara Umar.
I move to appoint to the Parks Recreation and Natural Resource Commission Rika Rajah, Tavin Konig, Tessa Pilord, Jack Petron, Noel Fitzgerald, excuse me, and Sophia Heffelt.
And then move to appoint to the Sustainability Commission Ishika Navanti, Ragadhi Vedi, Ankil Agarwal, Evie Elmquist, Gabriel Hernandez, Lucinda Jacobs and Simone Kirkaby. And as you listen to all of us struggle on names, the incredibly great news here is just the wonderful diversity that we have in our school district, in our city, not necessarily on our city council. I don't want you to rectify that immediately, but we do, as we go through time, want to make sure that all of our boards, commissions and councils and staff reflect the diversity of our city. But it's a, Eden Prairie is in a wonderful place right now in our school district. Dr. Swanson, I believe, is 53% or something, non-white kids of color or something, however we define diversity, but amazing stat, wonderful place to go and experience really relationships very much like our world. So with that, that was a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Sorry.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Is there any other business to come before? Councilmember report, I'm glad you reminded me, Councilmember Narayan, please, you've got the floor.
Thank you. Well, many of you know that Mr. Freiberg and I in the Southwest Transit Commission, and one of the recent news, information we received, I thought is important to share, the ridership for Southwest Prime Ridership. It's a very interesting number, and it's also, if you look at the ridership, Prime Ridership, there is a large majority is from Eden Prairie, even though we serve Southwest, serve Chaska and Eden Prairie and Chenhasan, right? So here are some numbers, which is very interesting. Most of the people riding Primes, around 34%, they are work-related. There is around 17% that they're taking Prime for healthcare, going to doctor's office and so on. Around 11% connecting to long distance, for example, going to the airport or somewhere else, they're connecting it. And around 26% of riders have no other option to get where they're going. That is also very, very important numbers. Two big reasons people choose our service because of low cost and better suit that their needs is around 25%. Around 36% of riders are over 65 years old. And around 43% of riders either have disability or other long-term health conditions. Around 44% of the riders have income less than $50,000 a year. When I saw this, I thought, how important is the Southwest, the transit service is in Eden Prairie that helping our residents? So I just want to share with my fellow council members and the residents.
Thank you. Councilmember Freiberg, anything to add since you also serve as a commissioner on the Southwest Transit?
Well, PG and I do serve on the commission. That's pretty complete. Did a good job on that. We are rather proud of the changes. That's where the growth is starting to happen with Southwest Transit, and those statistics are insightful, good.
Great. Now, any other business to come before the council this evening?
Mayor, just really quick, maybe not any business, but just some announcements because we get in the summer schedule and the council's been meeting in the third Tuesdays of the month, so we're doing that now, third Tuesday in June, we'll come back in July. But summer in Eden Prairie, there, we always like to say that there's an event almost every single weekend. There's something going on all the time and during the weekend. You know, if you think about what we're now getting into, just this past week, we've seen the beginning of our Staring Lake Concert Series and the Eden Prairie Players, summer shows. We've had, some of our service clubs have had their, some of their events, like Schooner Days with the Lions and Rotary and the Rib Fest, and the city took on the Memorial Day Celebration, which you did the welcome, and our parking rec director, Amy, kind of helped put that together and lead that. And now, now we're heading into July. July, what we're known for in Eden Prairie, the hometown celebration, and that's just within the next two weeks, it's going to happen before we have our next council meeting. And not only do we have our typical Fourth of July hometown celebration event like we've had for many, many years at Round Lake Park with events, music, food trucks that seem to multiply every year in the fireworks show that people have come to know and love through council direction and desire. July 3, we've had a Sparkle Fest event, kind of a family-friendly event on July 3 the last couple of years. And I don't want to use some of the mayor's comments on, fact-check me on this, but it's possible that we might be the first city in the state of Minnesota, I could be wrong, to have a pretty major drone show. That's going to, sensory-friendly drone show, it's going to be part of the, that's the July 3 event. We're still going to have the typical.
Major fireworks on the fourth.
Regular fireworks on the fourth, Mayor. And we're also having the military salute as well, and I believe that's at Staring, not Round Lake. The other events are at Round Lake on July 2, but we have something July 2, 3 and 4. But I did want to call out, and Lisa asked me to call out, the drone show on July 3 as well as the other events that we have coming up. And we also, and I'll just tease this as well, again, a project Amy's worked on, is we're going to have a couple new events out at Lake Riley and Riley Lake Park to emphasize the Dorrin Kemper House and the area around there, a couple events.
Historical.
Yeah. In addition to arts in the park. Arts in the park and the pop-up events that we have, but it's that season where you go to the city calendar and there's something going on two, three days a week in Eden Prairie. So hopefully, people can take part in those events.
So just to illustrate again that council members bring our passion, bring our ideas, we reflect the residents that elect us, but Councilmember Toomey has been championing, pushing the drone concept idea for years.
Three years, three years.
And she's, and it's happening this year, and it's going to be, I'm sure, amazing. And it just shows you again the power of one. So, Mr. Getchel, just to end here, people, if they didn't take notes during your presentation there, because there was a lot, they would find it out on our website, if they're on our email blast list, and they can get on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
By going out either on our website, whatever, but there's a lot of different ways to learn and find out about all of these incredible events that are happening across the summer.
Agreed, yes.
Okay, with that, anything else to come for the council this evening? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
If none, I move to adjourn the city council meeting.
Sir, second?
Second.
All those in favor, whoop, any discussion? Nope, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this meeting is adjourned.